Okay, let's call the Andover City Council meeting to order of Tuesday, July 24th. Start off with a roll call to my left.
Brian Schwan, council member.
Caroline Hale, council member.
Troy Tabor, council member.
Ben Lawrence, mayor.
Clark C.R. Nelson, council member.
Greg Schneider, council member.
Mike Keller, police chief.
Donna Davis, chief financial officer.
Chad Russell, fire chief.
J.T. Klaus, city attorney, and I'm here with Casey Scott, our legal intern for the summer, who's in her last year at Washburn Law School.
Les Mangas, director of Public Works.
Mark Deter, city administrator.
Item three this evening is the invocation. Pastor Evans here, sitting in the back there from Christ Church. Thank you for joining us. Come on up to the podium here and lead us in prayer, if you would.
Thank you very much for having me this evening. Would you all pray with me? Father God, we are thankful for this day that you've given us. We are thankful for each day that you do provide for us, because each day is a gift from you. We are so thankful for the blessings that you provide to this fair city, the way you continue to provide for us, for the wonderful servants that we have, from leadership to our first responders, to the support and infrastructure that we all enjoy and benefit from. We are just so grateful for each and every public servant that you've provided. We ask for your blessing upon them and their families. May you guide them and care for them. We ask for your blessings on this proceeding, and we pray that your wisdom, your guidance, would be present for every discussion, for every point, for every issue that is covered this evening. May your presence and your will be done in this time and in this place. And it is in your name we pray. Amen.
You stand with us for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item five is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? Or complain about our very breed-specific ban on pit bulls?
Yes, we know. So, Kristen Galan, 215 South Fairway Circle. And I did read through the new update, and I do appreciate the new language of the dangerous dog laws that have been implemented in the new ordinance. I do still want to understand, in Pit Bulls prohibited, Section 2, 311, pit bulls are unreasonably dangerous. The governing body, the city, finds and determines that pit bull dogs, as herein defined, are unreasonably dangerous, and it is in the best interest of the inhabitants of the community to prohibit them. And I'd like to know what criteria you're using to determine that this subsection of animals is unreasonably dangerous, and is it fact or opinion-based?
I mean, oh, you go ahead, Caroline. Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think we've talked about this quite a few times, and every time we've discussed it, sure, there's been a few of us that have some motions with it, but there's been statistics thrown out, kind of on both sides, but if you really do the research on it, you'll find that there's overwhelming significance in the difference in an attack from a pit bull than from most other breeds. And in the U.S., there's a significant amount, and I'm not going to throw out the percentages or numbers, because I don't have them in front of me. But we didn't take it lightly when it was brought to the bench, and we've certainly read and studied and looked at. And again, it's been overwhelming, the difference between pit bulls and a couple of the breeds, probably two, but pit bulls is what we were talking about, of the damage that's done, the amount of attacks. And as far as I'm concerned, for me personally, I mean, there's been no show, other than emotionally on the other side, of why it would be something that we want to overrule or change the law on in this city. It's my opinion.
Okay. I mean, I realize that some of the data gathered are from two websites, DogsBite.org, which is run by Colleen Lynn, and Animals247, which is run by Merrick Clifton. Colleen Lynn suffered an animal attack in 2007, and when viewing her original police report, she has changed her story about four different times, based on her blogs. She also gathers information from Merrick Clifford Clifton, who obtains the analysis and raw data to substantiate the statistics he has. And bona fide statisticians cannot confirm his data, nor will he provide his raw data. And if he is questioned, he calls those people pit bull nutters. Anyone who, like in the CDC, they are funded by pit bull rings, pit bull lovers. People who, one of the other things, people who support them are termed scientific whores. So I think somebody who is a valid entity containing actual factual information, and not just specifically based on media reports, which may or may not be true, and visual reports, which may or may not be accurate, according to DNA testing, I don't know, I think if someone were to really be strong in that opinion, they wouldn't mind sharing their information and letting other scientific communities validate that, whereas every other scientific community is completely against everything that DogsBite.org and Animals247 state.
Okay, well, I would say your response to my, is you're assuming those are the two places I win. They're not. There's probably 25 or 30 different places online that talk on both sides of the argument. Within our city, we had 23 dog bites, I think the last we talked, what was the total number of dog bites? Not the pit bull?
I think for 2017, we had 12 dog bites.
Any from a pit bull?
One. One was from a pit bull.
And of the, all the dog bites we had, how many of the dog bites required stitches?
The total of the 11 non-pit bull dog bites, there was a total of one stitch for all 11 injuries.
And with that one pit bull bite, how many stitches?
23 stitches.
As well as surgery?
Yes.
And by the way, the reason why there was only one pit bull is because it's illegal to own a pit bull.
Right.
So that's not saying that pit bulls, you know, you can't really compare it, although the one that was a pit bull was significantly different than the rest of them.
So wouldn't that thinking also term any large breed dog? You have a large breed dog and a small child, any large breed dog is going to inflict more damage than a smaller dog.
Maybe. I mean, I'm not going to refute that, but I would say that in the case of a pit bull being for, I don't know, what it was bred for, to do, to take down bears, et cetera, and the fact that it has some natural instinct that isn't necessarily there with a lot of the other dogs that are considered big breed dogs, then again, the argument isn't enough to sway me from saying, to continue what we currently have in our city at this point.
Okay, and you all are willing to place the burden on the Chicago, I mean, on the Andover PD to determine whether or not such animal is a pit bull, based on your physical characteristics that you listed, where veterinarians alone have poor reproducibility rates.
I mean, if you're asking me personally, I mean, yeah, I am. We have a police for a reason, and they're trained to do what they're trained to do. I don't think it's appropriate to go do a DNA test on everyone, which I think has been somewhat proven not as effective either, as 100 percent. But if I have to err on the side of caution for the people in my community, then yeah, I'm going to err on that side, and I'm going to say that the police can do a good enough job for that specific thing.
I don't intend to pursue this matter, but I thought that the ordinance required the municipal court judge to be the determining factor of those issues.
If it was brought before the municipal court judge?
Correct, as opposed to the police department.
Right. But at the time, it can be rendered by, and if that's the designation given.
It's very similar to a violation of, like, a speeding violation. The officer would cite the individual for having, if he or she believed they were in possession of a pit bull, they would cite them, and then the ultimate decision is based by the judge.
Very good. Thank you.
If they weren't a dangerous breed, why would the Department of Defense ban those on all our military installations?
Perhaps because maybe they're not qualified to do some of the things that they do. But the CDC has no issue with them, and they say there is no breed determinant that determines aggressiveness of a dog. You have Belgian Malinois trained to kill.
I think we're arguing about two different things. Aggressiveness, I will agree, pit bulls are maybe not the most aggressive animal out there, and they probably don't cause the most number, the biggest number of dog bites, but they cause the most damage. And that's what we're concerned about. You can come up here to every council meeting, and I'm sure you will, and you can talk about this till you're blue in the face. Nobody on this panel wants to change their mind. We instructed our police department to compile information, which they did, which we read and reviewed from various sources, and we all concurred that a ban on pit bulls is applicable to Andover for our residents. Majority of our residents appreciate it and want it. There's a handful that don't, and I understand that. We can't please everybody. The pit bull ban is going to remain in place. So keep on coming up here, keep on talking, keep on wasting everybody's time, but it stays in place.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment, too, because I'm pretty, I'm very much a dog lover, and everybody that was here when this first went down knows that I was the last one to get on board with this. And the ultimate decision for me was, over and over, when you hear these stories with people who are a dog within their own family, they say over and over, this dog has always been so gentle, and it's, you know, now torn the face off of this infant, and there's never been a problem. And you hear that in story after story. It's not like these people are attacked by some pit bull that was a strange dog to the family, it's within their own families. And after I've heard those stories over and over, my ultimate conclusion was, there's no way I want any of these near my grandchildren. And if I feel that way, then it's tough, I hate it, I mean, I love animals, and I'm sorry that this is the case, but I do feel that way, and it's taken me, took me a long time to get there, but there is nothing that I have seen that would lead me to believe, and I don't know what it is, I don't know why a dog can be gentle for three years and then go like they do in story after story that you've heard about pit bulls?
But are they all, can you tell me for a fact that all those dogs were pit bulls?
Well, I've seen the photographs of them and the stories as well, and I, I mean, I'm no expert, but I've got a pretty good grip on being able to look at a dog and identify from the head, the muzzle, you know, I'm not looking so much at the body so much as the head, but I'm not claiming to be an expert, but if owners are calling them pit bulls, then I would assume, you know, that, okay, it's a pit bull. These people are saying they own a pit bull that has, you know, killed their infant child, that has always been gentle and, I don't know. I'll just explain to you that I sympathize, I mean, I'm an animal lover, but again, story after story, and ultimately, I knew that I didn't want him around my grandchildren, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
So, my name's Megan, I live in Andover. I do not support the pit bull ban. It needs to be repealed. This is not a waste of time, this is saving innocent lives. You know, I think a lot of people, just based on what you just said, people that have pit bulls for years, and they said, oh, they turned on us. Well, is it because they really turned on them, or is it because, you know, there were other factors that went into place that made that dog vicious, and they don't want to admit that, and they don't want to be in trouble for possible animal cruelty or neglect? I found that actually, a lot of those cases, and you know what, I think I'm going to create a list, because I do have a lot already, and I'm working on it, and I do have, you know, the percentages and everything from other experts that have basically said that, you know, a lot of these, like with the ones of your, you know, attack from a pit bull has been shared, will be shared more, that story will be shared more than any vicious attack by, done by any other breed. And that's why it seems like, you know, you're hearing pit bull attacks after a pit bull attacks. But anyway, I mean, I can go on and on and on. I just wanted to say that, you know, in Andover, I mean, I know that there's been at least two separate incidents where the police did struggle to identify somebody's dog as a pit bull. And with the ban, you know, so, you know, it affects people that have a dog, even if it's not a pit bull, it can affect them, because it, somebody can call them in and report them, think it's a pit bull, the cop can think it's a pit bull, and they get seized. And I just think, you know, like what Kristen said, I'm happy with your vicious animal ordinance so far, but I just don't think we should be wasting taxpayers' money on a ban that only, that will only remove a dog out of Andover based on its looks, not by its behavior, and not by the owner's behavior as well, by, rather, through responsible owners or not. And a lot, you know, a lot of pit bulls are being euthanized, you know, for the fact that there are bans in surrounding cities and making it harder for them to be adopted. I volunteer for BIDs and BIS, I'm around a lot of pit bulls, I see for myself. And a lot of people don't, have not met a pit bull, have not been around multiple pit bulls, for, you know, the people that say that they are, you know, not, that they don't support pit bulls necessarily, that they want this ban, I feel like a lot of people don't know, don't know any pit bulls. They're just going off of what the media has said, and by off what maybe a friend or a relative has said. And, you know, I used to be scared of them as well, I used to be scared of them, of them in Rottweilers, and what changed my mind was being around them. So, I mean, you can talk to rescue organizations, you can go volunteer at a human society for a day, and just go see it for yourself. You know, and I just think it's really crazy in America, and in 2018, that we are removing family pets from loving, responsible owners over just ignorance. I mean...
I need to ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
No matter what, you know, this is, I mean, it's, no matter what, that dog is going to be traumatized, and the family's going to be traumatized. And even though you're rehoming the animal instead of euthanizing it, I mean, it's still just as bad. And I just can't believe in 2018, and in America, this, we have laws like this, I mean, it's so un-American, it's not Christian, and it's disturbing. Thanks.
Anybody else like to speak? There being none, we will close the public forum and move on to item number six, which is the acceptance of the agenda. My understanding is we are pulling item 12 off of the...
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Should be coming back with it at the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented, with the exception of deferring item number 12 to the next city council meeting.
Second. Motion by C.R., second by Brian, to accept the agenda sans item 11. Further discussion. Excuse me, item 12. Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries. Item number seven, we have a citizen request for a street closure.
Yes, good evening. I'm Mark Benson, I'm 1226 West Quail Crossing Court, and we've come to this council, I think this is our sixth year doing this, Steve. Our Friends of the Poor Walk from St. Vincent de Paul Catholic Church. It's a fundraiser that we're having Sunday, August 16th, and what it does, excuse me, September 16th, thank you, I brought him for a reason. Okay, it is Sunday, September 16th. The walk itself is from 10:00 to 11:00, but we would like the street closure from 9:30 to 11:30. That would give us time to set up for the walk and time to break down afterwards. The map is on the wall behind you, we would, or in front of you. We start at St. Vincent de Paul Catholic Church in the parking lot, we then go to Douglas, west to Chapel, north to First Street, and then east back to the church, and we'll do that. People walk that route as many times as they can or as they want to in one hour. We're asking for street closures on Douglas Chapel and First Street, just for the safety of our walkers.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the partial closure of Douglas Chapel and First Streets from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. on Sunday, September, that is not August, September 16, 2018.
Second.
Okay, a motion by C.R., and second by Greg, to approve the street closure as requested. Further discussion.
Yes, I have a question. When you're saying partial closure, are, like, if somebody lives in that, in one of those homes along First Street or something, are they notified ahead of time, or are they, so that they're going to know this street, you're not going to be able to get out of your driveway for this hour or something?
Yes, we distributed about 100 flyers in the neighborhood stating, on this date at this time, the street will be partially closed for this walkathon.
So, the partially closed, what does that mean? Emergency vehicles can get through, or what's the partial to it, if it's not closed?
Generally, in the past, it's, all these streets are two-way travel, so one way will be closed, the other way will still be open for travel.
Oh, okay, so they can still get in and out, they just want to watch and not hit a pedestrian, okay.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Item number eight, we have a presentation regarding our citizen input survey. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished city council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity, thank you, to present to you this evening. My name is Emily Yonkey, and I'm with Gardner Design, and we are a corporate identity and branding firm based in Wichita. So, we do branding and marketing strategy and identity work for corporations and organizations of all shapes and sizes, from Fortune 500 companies down to one-man shops. And we were approached a couple of months ago by Lease Real Estate in regards to identity development for a potential project, development project, here in Andover. So anytime that we put together a new identity, which is a logo and the accompanying visual elements that go with it, for a client, we always start with what we call the brand discovery process. And that allows us to get to know them and their project on a deep level. Part of that process is getting to know the key stakeholders, and in this case, we knew that the potential key stakeholders for a potential commercial and residential development in Andover would be Andover residents. And so we tried to figure out a way that we could get feedback from those residents in a way that was as painless as possible, but would still provide us with great information that we could use. At the same time, we needed a distribution vehicle to get the, to get the feedback, and so of course, a survey made a lot of sense for that. But we were also thinking about, how could we then distribute that survey in a way that would make sense to them and would not be seen as intrusive? So luckily, we met with some representatives from your city administration, and they offered to help us in distributing that survey. So I would like to thank you deeply for the opportunity to distribute that survey. At the same time, we want to make sure that you all receive value from the survey as well, so we are happy to share those results with you, and you received the full results of that survey in your packet. Sorry, it's about 90 pages, but hopefully, through combing through that information, you're able to get a lot of helpful information that you can use as well. So here are a few of the results that we saw and how we interpreted the data. We had about 390 total responses, and that was, that was a great response, as far as we were concerned. We started the survey on May 30th, and left it open for a few weeks, and we were able to see quite a few responses from that, so we were thrilled with that result. As you can imagine, most of the respondents lived in Andover. We saw a few from some of the surrounding areas, from East Wichita and some of the other surrounding cities. A lot of our respondents were in the 24 to 53 range, I'm guessing maybe 30s and 40s, as you may anticipate, but we had a good spread over some of the other age groups as well. We had a lot of female respondents, majoritively female, and many that were in the middle income So when we crafted the survey, we decided to leave a lot of the questions open-ended. We ultimately did that to keep from leading the respondents too much. So we wanted to be able to get honest feedback, so we didn't want to do a lot of multiple choice, where people might choose an answer because it was there and not because it was truly their answer. So that's part of the reason for the bulk of the survey answers, is that we left them open-ended, but we felt like that gave us the opportunity to get more thoughtful feedback. One of the interesting things that happened in this first question, this first, other than demographic question, what do you like about living in or near Andover? We kept seeing this small-town feel, small community, these similar phrasing coming up. And what was interesting about that was that it was combined small-town feel, but with a lot of amenities. And so I think one of the things that sets Andover apart, where we might see some other small Kansas towns that are, are really liking the small town, and it's, even if it's at the expense of some of the amenities, in Andover, you kind of see people wanting the best of both worlds. They want a small town and all that comes with it, and that sense of tight-knit community, but they also want the access to the things that they need. So going back through those responses, the phrase "small-town feel" came up around 50 times. Small town and community came up around 135 times. Schools, as you might expect, came up, the Great School District here came up around 150 times, and then safety, that your residents feel safe overall. Some of the other responses were the convenience, being able to go to the grocery store, or have some of the other amenities that are here, and then the proximity, and then the activities, all of the various activities that folks can participate in. Next question was, what about Andover needs to improve? As you can guess, we did have a lot of opinions in this section, and I'll leave you to comb through those in more detail. The idea of restaurants came up, but it was more specific to the types of restaurants. So more sit-down restaurants, less fast food were a lot of the answers that we saw. We also saw lots of folks wanting splash parks, a splash park in particular, or a larger splash park. It was interesting how many folks found a way of inserting that. There were some that you could tell that was kind of their agenda, so no matter what the question was, they found a way to answer it with splash park. Some of the other issues that came up, road issues, the retail options, taxes, and the pit bull ban. So these next couple of questions were really a lot more for our purposes. There are some things that you may find interesting about them, but this was really more for our brand analysis. A Stanford professor by the name of Jennifer Auker did a paper in 1997 about the brand personality types. So in looking at organizational brands, there are generally five different personality types that organizations fall into, to some degree. And those personality types are sincerity, excitement, competence, sophistication, and ruggedness. So question number seven gave a list of various personality traits, and we asked residents to assess those personality traits to the city. And depending on what they answered, the different traits were lumped into one of these general personality types. So the types that came up most prominently for you were sincerity, which is also a sense of wholesomeness, as well as competence. You had a little bit of sophistication in there, a little bit of ruggedness, but that was really more toward athletic, and then you had some excitement in there as well. These were... These were some of the top personality traits, so domestic, cheerful, wholesome, responsible, dependable. Those were your top five. Top values of the city, so we asked this more in a future-looking sense. So if, so which of these values do you believe Andover should have? So, it was not only a current, but an aspirational. The top five that came up there were fellowship, inclusiveness, playfulness, and fun. And that was your number one. I, I suspect that that has to do with this being a bedroom community, and when people are here, they want to escape the grind and escape the hustle and bustle. Balance and tradition. These were some of the other values that came up. Education, safety, family-friendly, respect, some similar themes to what we saw in some of other answers. So the next question was, "What businesses that Andover doesn't currently have, do you think it should have?" And really, for this one, I pulled out the specific restaurants or businesses that came up the most. And so some of these were Panera, Chick-fil-A, Chipotle, Starbucks, Aldi, Target. You know, some of these are, are folks' wish lists, no doubt. But also, you can see, specific to the, the restaurant question, these are the types of restaurants that folks are thinking about. Question number 10 was, "How important is sustainability or green living to you?" And this was a scale of zero to 100. And we asked, it was a sliding scale, there was a slider on it, so they could indicate, and they could slide to where they felt was relevant. And we had folks say, you know, 60 to 70 percent sustainability or green living. So we dug into that a little bit more, specifically, what types of improvements would you actually use? We didn't wanna know, "What do you think is nice?", we wanted to know, "What would you actually use?" So more green spaces and parks was number one. Community classes or projects that have to do with sustainability was pretty popular. Community garden, health food store, those were all popular answers. Some other things that came up in the, the other section were bike paths, solar power, more recycling options, and then water usage. Question 12, "How important is technology to you?" And this one was, again, the same kind of a slider. I did some in-person survey, surveys at the Police and Fire Festival. And I'll tell you that when I gave this to, this question to people in person, their response was, "Well, you have to have it." So it, I think that this one was less of a, for a lot of people was less of a, "I have to be on the cutting edge of technology," and, and was, "Well, I have to have my, I feel like I have to have my smartphone, or my tablet, or technology to be able to live my life." What type of technology improvements would you use in Andover? Greater access to public Wi-Fi. Some folks were excited about a computer or technology store. Real-time online access to public records was on there. More online interaction with public officials and neighbors was, was another popular, that was the, the second most popular option. And then a few people said, "None of the above." Question 14, "Would you like for Andover to be considered more of a rural, small-town or an urban microcity?" And here again, I think paired with that first question about small-town feel, that there's something that, that we can take out of this one. So this was another scale from zero to 100. But the, no one went over 50, over to the side that said, "Urban microcity." They all went down toward the rural, small-town. So there again, this idea that once you cross out of Wichita into Andover, folks really wanna feel that separation between, between the, the big city and the small-town. Which of these community activities would you or someone in your household attend? And this was a check-all that apply. Farmer's market, I realize that you have one already, but there were folks that said that either they'd like an additional one or a new one. There was food trucks, was, was popular. Your outdoor concerts and events were very popular. Splash pad. And, and then some, there were some folks that said they'd be interested in outdoor yoga or something like that. So this is the last question, it was, "Is there anything else you would like for us to know?" We always like to put that at the end of surveys, just to make sure that we catch any other concerns. There were some other folks, the folks had different, some other things to say, some positive, a few negative. But I wanted to pull out for you, how many people said thank you? And it was really more than just a polite thank you, but I think it was a genuine sincere thank you, that folks appreciated the chance to provide feedback. And I think they understood that not everything that they indicated was going to be implemented, but just the chance to, to provide that input back to you. So really, that's the end of my presentation. Be happy to take any questions.
I can just tell you, I thoroughly appreciate the work that you've done. I think this is very, very helpful for us now and in the future.
Thank you, it was our pleasure.
Anyone else? You got two thumbs up here.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number nine, which is the consent agenda. Items 9.1 through 9.9.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the consent agenda items 9.1 through 9.9 as presented.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Troy to approve the consent agenda items, agenda items 9.1 through 9.9 as presented. Further discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, 2019 budget. This time, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing regarding the proposed buzzet, budget, and ask if anybody would like to speak. I'm gonna leave that public hearing open and ask for the presentation of the budget.
Yes, sir. This year, we've tried to go over the major expenditures with the council prior to this public hearing and even prior to the publication of the budget. So I will try to get through this relatively quickly, since the council has already heard this a few times. But certainly, if it provokes any questions from the audience, we'd be glad to hear those. 'Cause this is our public's opportunity to comment on our budget. We're adopting the budget at 41 mils, which is essentially what we adopted at last year. I think we were at 40.973 when we adopted. And I'll get into a little bit of how that compares to other cities in the area, but we feel pretty comfortable that that's our mil levy. We're also increasing the Fire District 1 mil levy due to a, a lot, a lot of expenditures and things we're doing in the Fire Department. Their budget is obviously, their valuation is obviously smaller than ours. So when expenses go up, it's, you know, property taxes are really the only place to get funding from the Fire District from, so that's about a mil and a half that it's gonna go up. We're also going to be proposing increasing the gas franchise fees from 5% to 6%. Make that effective January 1. It is our understanding the City of Wichita is doing the same. We have already increased building permit fees, which will take effect January 1st. And then, looking at our combined new revenue from property tax, motor vehicle liquor tax, building permit fees and grass franchise fees, it's a little over $500,000. Just as a reminder, in 2018, the citizens of Andover will see a 1% reduction in their sales tax that they pay at retailers due to a .25% reduction from the county. And the City of Andover's sales tax that was for the street shop, fire truck, and restroom in Central Park of three-quarters of a percent will be dropping off October 1st as well. Looking at our operational budget, primarily, we're talking about personnel issues here. We're doing a 1.5% merit increase for employees that will be effective January 1 for those who qualify. A 1.5% cost of living adjustment that will happen midway through the year for budgetary purposes. So that's about a little over $100,000 in increase in expenditures for employee pay. Then also, we budgeted a 10% increase for health and dental insurance. That's pretty much what the market is right now. We're absorbing three new firefighters into the budget. We had a grant, a, what it's called a SAFER grant, that paid for the first two years of the firefighter salary. But this year, the grant will run out, and we'll be absorbing $170,000 into the budget. Our police and fire pension fund, the state's police and fire pension fund is seeing a 10% increase this year, so that's approximately, just a little less than $70,000. The wastewater department is adding an employee, however, that, again, that's a utility where that doesn't affect property taxes. They're also getting rid of a seasonal employee, and they're picking up some duties that are former, a former employee was, was doing. We're kinda transferring those over to the sewer department in terms of sewer locates. So we look for that to be about a $10,000 to $15,000 impact on the wastewater budget. We're looking at an increase in workers' compensation. We are going to take proposals on our workers' compensation insurance. As many of you know, we're covered by the Kansas Municipal, our KMET, the statewide pool. We have a lot of smaller cities in there that we think may have a little bit of a negative effect on our overall insurance. But, you know, we wanna compare and make sure, we're probably looking at someone like Travelers, who has our, our current property and casualty coverage as a main competitor for that. And then, for the first time in 15 years, we're also raising governing body pay, which, you know, is always something that the governing body is hesitant to do. But we wanna continue to attract quality people to our governing body. And, you know, my position has been that council members and the mayor should be compensated for their time and, and what's appropriate. You can never get back entirely what you put into it, but we don't want anybody to feel like they're losing money serving on the governing body. So we can go to the next. Our park capital outlay has a lot of money in it this year. We've gone over these expenditures. One major one is we're going to try to use some excess sales tax money from the three-quarters of a cent sales tax to pay for a new restroom. We've also got new equipment for the park department, ball-diamond lights, renovation for Central Park Lodge. That all totaled is $165,000. I don't want anybody to get confused that one item is that way. And then we also have our program for replacing new, the neighborhood parks, playground equipment of $40,000, and that's coming from the Park Improvement Fund. We're purchasing two new fire trucks that were in the CIP, three new police vehicles that we do yearly. The Police Department is purchasing a new records management and CAD system for both the Police Department and the 911. We have a citywide phone system that we're replacing. And total, what we're gonna be doing next year, we're projecting between Yorktown and 159th KTA Bridge, the central, is $6.5 million that the city will spend. Now, just as a reminder, we, 90% chance we're not going to go and spend all that out of our street sales tax fund, we're probably gonna bond that. But we do wanna leave ourselves the flexibility to do it based on what our collections are and, and that type of thing. But my guess is, we'll probably only wind up spending half of that out of our street sales tax fund, and then we'll issue debt on the other half of that. And then, we always, just as a reminder, now that we have the Red Bud Trail, if a property owner along there wants some fencing, we have to contribute to 50% of whatever the fencing request is. So we budget about $40,000 in our Park Impact Fund for that. We don't look to be, that to be necessary every year, but it's something we, we budget for. So I've been over this with the city council many times, probably citizens have heard this multiple times too. But of course, our property tax in Andover is higher than Wichita, higher than a lot of Sedgwick County cities, because we have the community college. Our city is higher than the City of Wichita. Our school district is, you know, higher than several of the school districts in the area because of a variety of the things we're doing. So it, it makes our, particularly compared to Wichita, our property test taxes significantly higher. But if you break it down by entities that are cities, the only one in the area, when you include fire protection, who is any lower, is the City of Wichita, which they have a $3 billion-plus valuation. So economies of scale dictate that they're gonna have a lower mil levy than the City of Andover. But if you start going through that, and I've also put in sales tax collections just to show you the variety of things, you can see that we're less than most of our smaller city, well, all of our smaller cities in the area, particularly when you count Sedgwick County's 18-plus mills for fire protection, that places like Bel Air and Park City, and Mays and Goddard, those, all those citizens pay that. So when you hear anybody in those other communities talk about how low their mil levy is, most of the time, they're not including fire protection in that. And that's a big number for a lot of those citizens that they pay in those areas. I have been told by Eldorado and Augusta that their mil levy is going to stay about the same. I think it's possible that they're talking about a, maybe a half mil decrease in Augusta. The county is also talking about a half mil decrease too. I will say that their valuation went up 6.2%, which is gonna be approximately $40 million in new valuation for the county. That's over a million dollars in property tax collection, so it's understandable that it went down. They have a, some, some pipeline work that's going on, that's adding valuation to the county. So that's good for them, but it does also help their ability to drop a half mil. So, just as a reminder, is, we are seven mils lower than Derby, who's got a higher valuation than us. And then you can go down that entire list and see that we're lower than most of the other small towns, except for the one town we're compared to constantly, and that's Wichita. And we just will never be as low as the City of Wichita is. Which, by the way, their city manager reminded me that they hadn't raised their mil levy in 25 years, which I don't know if it's in their best interest or not, but they've worked hard to keep their property tax at a steady rate that it is. So I certainly withstand for any questions from the council, the public, or anybody else to discuss our budget. I would remind you that the published budget that you see that's with less transfers is $28.5 million. A lot of that is just capital improvement-type things, like the $6.5 million we're talking about for sales tax. Our operational budget is probably more like $12.5 to $13 million. Bond and interest, road construction. I could go through a long list of things that cause our budget to more than double due to the, all the projects we're doing. But our operational budget is more like $12.5 million to $13 million.
Okay, there, there still is a public hearing open. Would anyone from the audience like to comment? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reserve any comments if there are any to the bench.
Mr. Mayor, I would simply say to Mark and your staff, what a phenomenal job. I think you've done a wonderful job on this. And I hope that we can work within the bounds of, of the budget. But a job well done.
Mr. Mayor?
Caroline.
Are we ready to?
Go ahead.
I would move to approve the City of Andover 2019 budget as presented.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Brian to approve the City of Andover's 2019 budget as presented. Further discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is going, where now? It's done, right?
Take care of all that tomorrow, but please do not leave the seat until I have your signature.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Yeah.
All right, number 11, Cornerstone 8th Edition Water and Sewer Plans.
Steve Anderson, City Engineer, thank you for the chance to present this. This is another step of the development of the Cornerstone neighborhood, north of 21st. The Cornerstone 8th Edition has been received, approved, and recorded. This project has been designed by Mid-Kansas Engineering Consultants, the Plating Engineer, and they're ready to bid the plans. So, the motion is before you for the water and sewer project to accept the plans and authorize the bidding.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the plans for Cornerstone 8th Edition for the water and sewer improvements. Authorize the bidding of these improvements as presented.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Greg to approve the water and sewer plans and authorize the bidding of the same. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve, we deferred. Move on to item number thirteen, which is the vicious animal ordinance.
Mr. Mayor and city council, before you is a, uh, an ordinance that would amend our current vicious or dangerous dog ordinance that we've had for a while. If you remember, probably six months to a year ago, we brought this to you that we were, that we needed to strengthen the ordinance that we did have. Uh, I wanna say that this does not impact our pit bull ordinance. Uh, our city attorney JT has gone through this and made tweaks to it to make sure, uh, this doesn't go in conflict with our, um, pit bull ordinance. Uh, this basically deals with dangerous dogs. Uh, the changes are, uh, this will allow our officers, it, it, it establishes guidelines to declare an animal vicious. And, uh, it puts them into four different categories with different, uh, impacts on the categories. Those are potentially dangerous, uh, animal, a dangerous level one, dangerous level two, and dangerous level three. And those are based on, uh, an officer will assess the situation, the incident, what occurred, and determine, uh, based on those guidelines, what that animal, uh, should be classified. Uh, and if, if it's just a, uh, potentially dangerous animal, then the requirements that they would have, the owner would have, would be basically that animal would have to be registered annually. They would be required to put signage up, uh, they would be required to have the animal microchipped. And in twenty-four months, if no other incidents occur, that tag of potentially dangerous could be removed. Moving up to level, uh, level one, um, or level two, there would be registration required, signage, microchipping. Uh, but there would be additional security, uh, secure enclosures required, uh, by the animal, uh, or for the animal. Uh, and then if it was a level one, that tag could be removed after, could be removed after thirty-six months. Uh, a level two, a designated level two would never have that tag removed. And a level three, uh, is the most severe. Um, that would require the animal be euthanized. This, when an officer takes a report and does, uh, determines that an animal fits one of these categories and determines to be potentially or dangerous, um, it, the individuals have a right to appeal that. And what changes, uh, for you is that appeal does not come to the city council anymore. It goes to our judge, similar to our pit bull ordinance. Um, so that appeal within ten days would go to the judge and ultimately, it's the judge's decision on, uh, the outcome or the, uh, where that animal is placed. It also increases our fines a little bit. It basically puts them in a level of misdemeanors. Uh, first offense is two hundred and fifty dollars minimum, maximum five. Uh, second is five hundred minimum, maximum a thousand. And third offense or more, uh, is a thousand, uh, minimum and twenty-five hundred maximum. All could carry up to, uh, a year in jail, but that's typical of any misdemeanor. That's really it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Any motions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to repeal and amend chapter two, article five, section two dash five oh one through two dash five oh three of the code of the city of Andover, Kansas, which contains provisions prohibiting the keeping, harboring, harboring or owning of vicious animals within the city. And the city desires to replace sections two dash five oh one through two dash five oh three of the code and add sections two dash five oh one through two dash five one five.
Second.
Motion by Greg, second by Brian, to approve the amended ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item fourteen, uh, amphitheater committee.
Yes, it probably feels like Groundhog Day, Mr. Mayor and council, because we just did a resolution creating this committee about three, four months ago. Committees met a few times, um, Councilman Schwan and Mayor Lawrence have been on that committee. We've met in person and email. It's worked well, but we pretty quickly figured out that we really needed a representative of the police department involved in that committee as well when we're talking about traffic, security, things of that nature. We really needed someone in the room or the email string as we were making these decisions. So you have two actions tonight. One is to approve the revised resolution, which includes a police department representative. And then, um, a formal request to put Buck Buchanan, um, into that position for now because he is the captain over, um, special events.
So fourteen point one, first.
Mr. Mayor, I would, uh, move to adopt a resolution amending the amphitheater committee by adding a representative of the Andover Police Department.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Brian, to, uh, amend the resolution as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen point two, as Jennifer just said, I would like to appoint Captain Buck Buchanan to the committee.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we appoint Police Captain Buck Buchanan to the amphitheater committee.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Troy, to approve the appointment as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Captain Buchanan's been notified.
Prior to the meeting or after? Whoa, uh, member items. Brian, you wanna start us off?
I'm good tonight.
All right, Caroline.
Well, really, the only thing is I have challenged the Andover Police Department to get involved in the lip sync challenge. And so I'm hoping that the, he, police chief has told me he won't do it, but if he gets a volunteer, that we'll maybe be able to see our own officers in blue doing something on YouTube. I just think it's fun. I've been watching a lot of them around the country.
We are currently working on trying to tie something like that into National Night Out.
Oh, that'd be great.
That it?
That's it.
Troy?
Okay, um, yeah, two quick things. One is, uh, we had an amazing concert again. Although I wasn't there, my parents were, and they, they talked about it solidly for seem what seemed like hours and hours and, and as most parents do. And they, and I wanted to thank everyone that spoke to them and said kind things and stuff. That was pretty amazing, had a pretty big impact on them and, and me as well. Thank you for that. Um, second thing is, uh, the previous council meeting I, I missed, cause I got a, the opportunity, got a mission trip. And I wanna say that Andover was represented very well, not just for me. My son went as well, as, as well as a few of their kids from Andover. And it's cool to spread, uh, the love that we have in Andover here with other people. It's a pretty amazing thing. That's all I got.
C.R.
One item. The citizen input survey that was provided is a, I hope that we are taking that and studying that carefully, various departments. It, it may save us an awful lot of money, uh, and it, it's really nice to hear what input has occurred from the citizens, about four hundred citizens. That, that's not a bad result. And, uh, I'd really like to get into the details of that and see if there's anything we can do.
I would, we're just gonna make one comment on that. Councilmember Nellis and, Councilmember Schneider had said this to me. I had no idea people wanted a splash pad. I mean, that just, I mean, it's almost like there was an organized effort and they called each other, but it's amazing. And, you know, we've, I, we've never really talked about that much in three years. Since I've been here, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and, you know.
I thought that was over at Ben's house.
The, uh, there are some issues with splash pads, some, um, sanitation and hygiene issues that, um, like I said, we discussed it and, um, those things are actually incredibly very, they're dirty. So you have to continually run, uh, fresh new water through them instead of recycling. And, you know, if we're gonna do that, we should have done it right out there in front of the amphitheater on that concrete. But, um, it has been discussed and, yeah, I mean, maybe in the future. Well, we'll see what the future holds and, um, maybe a new, maybe this new development can consider it, you know?
Nothing further?
Great thing, sir.
Well, um, I too was surprised by that survey. And I will tell you, I was, um, I was a little excited about the community garden concept. There's a lot of communities have that. A lot of you know that I garden. I like it, I enjoy it, it's a lot of stress relief, but it's a lot of work too. But, um, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of life lessons in a garden, believe it or not. And, uh, I would be particularly interested in that concept and potentially sponsoring that concept. If we can find the appropriate place, um, find the appropriate personnel. Uh, you know, and I, I'll take this endeavor on myself. I know there's, uh, extension offices around the state that, uh, can assist with this. And I'm sure there's other communities that already have this concept. And I'd be interested in researching that a little bit and finding out what it's, what it takes to get one off the ground, so, so to speak. Staff, have anything else? Don't leave before you sign.
Just really quickly, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank Clark for his comments. Everybody does work very hard on the budget to present something that they think is in the best interest of the citizens and keeping the taxpayer in mind. But it's a opportunity also to thank, you know, we've had a couple of big projects. The amphitheater's been something that all the staff has worked very hard on. And I just wanna show my appreciation for the fire, police, parks, obviously, but even streets and sewer. I mean, just about our entire organization has been involved in that. And it's been just a, a great effort by our staff. The other one thing I wanna mention, I know it's a topic every time, but the police chief has shown unbelievable patience with all these dogs, uh, dog issues. I would have lost my patience a long time ago if I had to go through this. I just don't have the wherewithal. And, uh, he has been professional and impartial on it, and I really appreciate it because it's an issue that we could all just throw our hands up at some point and feel like we could never satisfy anybody. But we've just been diligent on it, and I know people love their pets around here, but it seems like we've spent a lot of time and he's responded very well, so I appreciate all that.
Now that you bring it up, I was planning on intending to have a conversation with you all later about that. I, I think one of these days, um, on this issue, since we hear about it so much, we need to have a public referendum. It needs to be on the ballot. And we'll let our entire community decide one way or the other. And that, good or bad, for or against, vote. And if the vote's to keep the current ban in place, that's the way it is. Somebody comes and complains, we voted on it, pass. If the, if it's to remove the current ban, then I think we need to talk about or figure out a way to do it. But I think you need, I think we need a public referendum, if not this year, next year, sometime. It's too late to get in on November ballot, isn't it?
Think we would be pressing the county clerk a lot to get a question like that on at this point.
Something to think about, something to fodder.
I think, I think the city attorney would probably point out that it's probably a non-binding thing if you put it on the ballot.
I know that it is.
Actually, just for the record, the law prohibits non-binding elections, and this is not a topic on which an election would be authorized. So it, I guess it's to relieve the burden that would otherwise exist on the representatives responsible for calling the elections. The only, the only way to call an election on this ballot would be if, uh, a referendum were called by the populace, and that would have to be by petition.
I, I must say, I am against that type of referendum. I don't think it's that big of an issue disparagingly. It's vastly majority on what we're doing. And that's, that's part of being elected here. And I don't see any need for any election for that purpose.
Fair enough. I don't care. But I, I, I guess, I guess I'm with you. I was just looking for confirmation that we're right. I know we're right. I know you know we're right. And I know the vast majority of the people in this community appreciate that ban. I'm just tired of hearing about it. Anything else? Let's get out of here.
Make the motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sign the budget.
Let's refuse to sign. You're gonna have to pay me.